Commissioner Sefeli. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Oday.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Walker. Chairman Romano.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Saying allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you, Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Tell them.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. Posting notice of Resolution eight dash oh one twenty twenty five on the County Commissioners Bulletin Board, first floor Administration Building Annex, Jersey City, New Jersey. Copies of the above-mentioned resolution have been sent to the county clerk and the editors of the Carney Observer and the Star Ledger. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the caucus meeting of June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, June, a regular meeting of June twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, the caucus meeting of July fifteenth, twenty twenty five, and the regular meeting of July seventeenth, twenty twenty five?
Motion. Oday and Sedano.
Commissioner Pontilivski. Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Oday. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, turn this over to Albarico for a laudatory.
Yes, of course.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Clerk. It's my esteemed pleasure and honor to read this for our colleague Marcy McLaren. She probably doesn't even remember. When I was a law clerk here, she's the first person I ever talked to because she had to process my paperwork. So she was the first person I ever came in contact with. So this resolution is to honor and commend Marcy McLaren on her retirement from the County of Hudson after thirty-seven years of service in the office of the Hudson County Council Department of Law. Whereas Marcy Bethia McLaren is a true daughter of Jersey City, born in the former Margaret Hague Hospital, now the Jersey City Medical Center, educated in the Jersey City Public School System, and graduated from Dickinson High School as a RAM in nineteen eighty-seven. And whereas thereafter, Marcy attended Drake Secretarial College, attaining a certification for executive secretarial studies, and after completion of her courses, as destiny would have it, she interviewed with the Office of the Hudson County Council Department of Law. And whereas Marcy began her career in the Law Department on August first, nineteen eighty-eight, and since held several positions within the Law Department, for example, clerk typist, secretarial assistant, legal assistant. And whereas in nineteen ninety-seven, Marcy was given the opportunity to become the Secretary to the Director of Law slash Office managerial position in the Office of the Hudson County Council, Department of Law, staff and their subdivisions. And whereas during the course of her employment, Marcy fulfilled her duties with integrity, commitment, excellence, and professionalism, and has always been a team player, and has offered her wisdom and experiences to her coworkers and colleagues throughout the county. And whereas Marcy has been respected and admired by her coworkers within the Hudson County Council's office and the people she encountered while performing her duties. And whereas Marcy has earned a well-deserved reputation as professional, reliable, and most importantly, a dedicated employee of the Hudson County Law Department. Her demeanor and understanding allowed her to interact effectively with directors, county officials, coworkers, and the general public, thus generating goodwill for the County of Hudson. And whereas Marcy's unique and vast experience and wealth of knowledge of the county's mission and government has been a valuable and indelible asset to the County of Hudson and the Law Department and its various subsidiaries. And whereas during her almost four decades of service within the County of Hudson, she has served under four county executives and six county councils, as well as hundreds of employees. And whereas notwithstanding the strains of preparing a hectic commissioner's agenda, sometimes with as many as sixty resolutions, Marcy has always been able to navigate the demand with care, concentration, patience, and attention, while never ignoring or avoiding anyone in need of assistance, often going above and beyond the call of duty, which exemplifies a strong work ethic and dedication. And whereas Marcy's value to the Law Department was, is, and always will be priceless, and will always be cherished by all of us who have ever worked with her and for her, as she has been a beacon to all new employees and a consummate manager and professional. And whereas Marcy has been married to her husband, Joseph G. McLaren, for thirty-two years, and out of their marriage were born two wonderful children, Chanel McLaren and Marcus McLaren, who are the joys of their life. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Hudson County Board of Commissioners as follows. One, the Board of Commissioners, along with County Executive Craig Guy, extends heartfelt good wishes and much happiness to Marcy McLaren on her well-deserved retirement from the Hudson County Department of Law. Two, this board is honored for the opportunity to express its appreciation to Marcy McLaren for her valuable service to the County of Hudson. Three, letting Marcy know that no matter where she may be, she will always have a home in the County Law Department. And four, this resolution shall take effect immediately. I'm sure you all join with me in possibly.
Have to vote on it first. Have to vote. Have to vote on it.
Mr. Chairman, please note that Commissioner Pontilivski has joined us.
Thank you.
And for the vote. Commissioner Basleys.
For me? Yes, I have it on this. Mission.
We've known each other a long time. Your smile, that smile is a wonderful thing when we used to walk into the Law Department. Your kindness, your professionalism, your way of doing things without ever being non-professional is what I remember the most. You're one of, I will have fond memories of working with you all these years. I came and I went, I came and I went, but you are one of the fondest memories. The Law Department, all employees that are retiring right now. It makes my heart bleed because I'm getting to that point, because I'm up there with the amount of years with all of you. But I just want to say, so well-deserved. Enjoy your retirement. Enjoy your family. Yes.
Please pull the mics closer to you. Commissioner Sefeli. Commissioner Lopez. Oh, I'm sorry.
I've logged on. Yeah, my computer crashed. I'm only on the phone.
Okay.
To Marcy, Mr. Basleys had said that he's getting up there in his tenure. He is nowhere near me in his tenure. No, but Marcy has been the County Council longer than I've been around, and that's going somewhere. But every time I've ever spoken to the County Council, and over the years, I've spoken to several County Councils, and sometimes our conversations between County Council and myself have not been all that cordial, but Marcy, to her credit, was always the professional. She's, she's just the epitome of a professional person that you can deal with and never have any recriminations. She always gave you the right answer. She was always calm, and her demeanor was always professional and wonderful. And we're going to miss that. And so I wish her and her husband many, many more years of happiness and good health. And we're going to miss you. Thank you. And I proudly vote aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yeah. Bossy, I work with a lot of newer teachers and employees, and I always tell them, make sure you come to work with a smile in the morning because your kids deserve that. And here, your employees and citizens of Hudson County deserve that. And when you leave, make sure that you're leaving with a smile because leave all your problems from work here because your family deserves that. It's rare that we have someone that can do both and then also keep a smile throughout the workday and make everybody's day brighter. And you've done that for your whole career. So I just want to thank your family for sharing you with us for so long, and thank you for the wonderful job you've done. God bless you and enjoy your retirement.
Your vote. Commissioner Pontilivski.
Go ahead. You're right.
Marcy, I don't know for not, I don't know you for a long time, but the little time that I know you. It's true that all my colleagues are saying, so I just cannot be saying more than that because you professionally is just you and a smile always in your face. Thank you. Enjoy your retirement with your family. I vote aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Oday.
So you've always had a pleasant smile. You are always friendly. My history goes back with the McLaren side of the family, back to when you were a freshman, probably, in Dickinson High School in nineteen eighty-five. So that history is so long. You've just always been a class act. Like, I've never heard anybody say a bad word about you, whether it's inside the county or outside at any event. You're always there. You're always friendly. You always smile. You're always there to be helpful to people. And you're young, so I don't know what your next act shows. I know you're not retired-retired because you're way too young. You've got way too much energy to actually spend your days and not do something. So I'm very curious, when you get up and speak, to find out what your next act is going to offer us because you've got way too much talent at your age to just go off and collect the pension and relax every day. But I obviously vote aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Sedano.
Marcy, congratulations on your retirement. Thank you for the years that you have dedicated to the residents of Hudson County. Thank you for your hard work and everything that you do to help your colleagues and to help us here on the board. So I just want to wish you a healthy retirement. I hope that you get to enjoy with your family because that's what it's about, right? Thank you. I vote aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Marcy, oh my God, I echo what all my colleagues have said about you. Thank you for your pleasant personality and that dedication to your job and commitment to the people of our community and our department. Thank you for everything you've done for us all the years. I mean, people that know you longer have expressed numerous pleasant and wonderful things about you, and I believe those. So I wish you the best in your future endeavors. Congratulations on your retirement from us. Thank you. God bless. Yes, I vote yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Walker.
Yes, just want to echo what my colleague said. You definitely have a beautiful smile. She is definitely a RAM because at St. Anthony's, our home court was actually Dickinson. So I kind of knew Marcy a really long time since kind of high school, but we wanted to say good health and congratulations and enjoy your family. Enjoy your time off. And like Bill was saying, I'm curious to know your next move because you're definitely a bright star. And if you need a landing spot, just holler at me. You're coming to Walker, so.
You might have a bidding war. You might get a bidding war on that, Jim.
And I vote aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chairman Romano.
When I first became a commissioner, one of the first people I had to interact, and it was actually outside, and who was a welcoming presence and the warmth that she showed to someone who was just walking into something that he didn't know much about. I think that says it. The personality, the ability to keep it real. Born and raised Jersey City, Hudson County. That's how we all rolled. She's a straight shooter. She's a strong leader, which is always important, especially in the Law Department and dealing with this group of commissioners. And you're a class act. You're a steadying presence, and you're truly loved. And I just want to say for me, good luck to you and your future endeavors. As Bill said, there's probably a door that's going to open, whether it be privately or publicly. But all we can say is thank you, thank you, and thank you. God bless you, my friend.
I guess I got to say something now, right? Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
All right. I didn't have any speech written down because I want to speak from my heart.
You're real.
You would say that. Speak from my heart because I don't want to cry. Of course, this county has been my life. As you know, I came here very young. I've been working here, to be honest, you can hear from the speech, thirty-seven years. And the county was my life every day. So it's like my family that I'm leaving, but I'm never going to be too far away. I want to thank the administration for having faith in me and my coworkers and all of these other coworkers here that I have been working with constantly, daily. I appreciate you. I appreciate the kindness and the support from everyone throughout the county. And my future plans are to relax. Can I relax for a minute?
You deserve it, sister. You deserve it.
I want to relax for a minute. I haven't thought about it, you know. But I'm quite sure that I have a lot to do. This is my daughter. If anybody ever met her, she still will be at the county, so treat her very good. Okay? But I just want to thank you all for all the kind words and everything that the county has done for me and my family. You know what? You know what? I never missed a paycheck. Never was ever laid off or anything like that. So I'm grateful for that. And I'm grateful for this job that provided me the abilities to provide for my family. I have two children. They're very well-educated. I have a nice husband. I love him to death. And for that alone is enough, you know, that you don't have to worry about what tomorrow is going to bring. But also, I want to start to think about the next chapter in my life, where I'm on the beach and my feet in the sand and a drink in my hand. Then I would think about it. I'll let you know. But I love you guys and thank you. Okay?
Come on up for a photo with us.
Could her daughter join you?
Hello. Hello.
She has one with her daughter. Okay, okay.
Okay.
Next order.
Thank you, everybody from the Law Department. Go ahead.
The next order of business.
Shh. Go ahead.
Is to turn it over to the administration.
Go ahead, Albarico.
Administration.
Chairman, we have nothing further for this agenda.
Okay.
To the public, according to the policy set by the Board of County Commissioners, members of the public are asked to limit their comments to five minutes when discussing agenda items and three minutes at the conclusion of the meeting for persons who submitted a written request to discuss matters of public interest. At this time, the public may address the board on any item on the agenda. Only please keep your comments limited to five minutes. Are there any speakers on the agenda items only?
Good afternoon. Mark Bloomberg from West New York. So I question is about two items on the agenda today. One is thirty-eight H. It's essentially upgrades of some bathrooms. No argument. The bathrooms in question definitely need to be upgraded. For $200,000, though, I could build a new wing on my house. So I don't really want to discuss this much. I just want to raise it and say, has this really been vetted, given what the size of those bathrooms are? What I do want to talk more about is item number eight. Does anybody know what project specifically this is? It's $500,000 that we're getting additionally, which is great. I'm curious if it's the Boulevard East Main Drive to Palisades Triangle project or if it's something else.
If you finish, then they'll answer.
Okay, so assuming it is that project, one portion of it raises a lot of questions in my mind. If it's a safety projects, project, why does it include a driveway that's going into the park that has never had an accident on it? That portion is basically being added to support the preschool and the specs for the driveway are based on Department of Education standards, not the Department of Transportation. If I owned a house and I decided to load it up with electronics or hydroponics or whatever, a data center, and I blew out the fuses and I went to the landlord and said, hey, you got to upgrade my electricity. The landlord would say, no, that wasn't the right use of the house. You pay for it. Well, if North Bergen is going to put a preschool in the park and they need a driveway for it, they're the ones that should be paying for it. So I want to raise, as more money is coming in for this project, that it's not being misspent and North Bergen pays their fair share. You know, North Bergen locks the parking lot regularly that that driveway leads to. So, you know, saying that it's shared use by park users just isn't true. July fourth, Memorial Day weekend, yeah, you could use the driveway and you would have found a locked gate. There's enough parking. That driveway shouldn't be a part of this project. And this money hopefully isn't going to help support, support it. Thank you.
Dave or Albarico would answer.
Chairman, if I may, this is, Mr. Bloomberg, this is just simply a budget amendment for a grant that was approved back in June, on June twelfth of twenty twenty-five. With the way the county budgeting works, we can't put items that we receive as part of a grant into the county budget until after the budget's approved. So that's why you'll see a number of these budget amendments through Finance Administration. They're the first several items on the agenda. But the grant initially was approved by the Board of Commissioners back at the first June meeting in twenty twenty-five. So this doesn't really affect the project or any parts of the project or the grant application itself. This is just simply a record-keeping procedure that we need to do, you know, as far as the budget goes.
Okay, I appreciate that it's just receiving of money, but I hope I've made my point about that overall project and how money gets allocated to it. Thank you.
Afterwards, you can also speak with Director Di Filippo on both items. Okay, next. Oh, next speaker.
I can briefly speak to that in terms of the, we were still advancing the scope of the project with respect to the physical configuration of the road, and it's primarily a safety project, the Long Boulevard East. We will be having a public information center on the project. We do not have a date set yet. That will be advertised and publicized. We're thinking early fall for a public information center, so that's.
If you can elaborate anymore after the meeting with Mark, please. Thank you.
I guess just on the other item related to the bathroom, I would assume that we can provide, not us, but also provide a speaker detailed scope of services after the meeting.
Yeah, he's going to see Director Di Filippo.
Curious to get the scope of the, scope of services based on it.
Thank you, Director Di Filippo. Continue, Madam Clerk.
Before I have a motion to approve that, we have a public hearing on the draft of the official Hudson County map.
Dave.
Actually, Madam Clerk, if I may, that's, all those items are on the consent agenda, so it would be, I believe, and subject to your counsel, I believe it would be appropriate to take a vote on the consent agenda and then do the
And then do that.
The one thing that we didn't put on the consent agenda after the hearing.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Continue, Madam Clerk.
May I have a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda? And a second.
Lopez and Sedano.
Commissioner Pontilivski.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Oday.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Harry.
She's on mute.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
And Chairman Romano.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, how do you want to do it, Ed?
No.
A public hearing will be held on the twenty-twenty-fifth draft official Hudson County map. Please take notice that the Hudson County Board of County Commissioners will conduct a public hearing to provide the general public with an opportunity to comment on the twenty-twenty-five draft official Hudson County map at the regularly scheduled August Commissioners Meeting pursuant to NJSA forty colon twenty-seven dash five. It will be held on Thursday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, at 1:00 PM in the Commissioners' Chambers at five sixty-seven Pavonia Avenue, First Floor, Jersey City, New Jersey. The map was available online. Are there any speakers on this? There are no speakers on proposed. I see no one. I'll have for a motion to close the public hearing. Second. Commissioner Pontilivski.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys.
Yes.
Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Oday. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Chairman.
Walker.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
I'll include that then as another vote.
Yes. Yes.
For the adoption of the twenty-twenty-five map. Commissioner Pontilivski.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Oday.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
We have three ordinances for introduction. Ordinance one, it's an ordinance amending the Hudson County Administrative Code pursuant to the applicable provisions of the optional county charter and law, NJSA forty colon forty-one A dash one. May I roll call. Pontilivski.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys.
Yes.
Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Oday. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Commissioner Oday.
Yes, for introductions.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
The ordinance has been introduced. Ordinance two, it's an ordinance amending Chapter two hundred, Article eight point three of the Administrative Code to regulate parking at John F. Kennedy Boulevard in the city of Jersey City, a county-owned roadway. Commissioner Pontilivski.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Oday.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
The ordinance has been introduced. Ordinance three, it's an ordinance amending Chapter two hundred, Article twenty-seven of the Administrative Code to establish traffic calming devices on Newark Street and Monroe and Grove Street in the city of Hoboken. Commissioner Pontilivski.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Oday.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano. The ordinance has been introduced. We have one ordinance for adoption. It's the ordinance to establish and authorize salary increases for certain county offices of positions, including the staff of the commissioners in accordance with the provision of the New Jersey law and the Hudson County Administrative Code. This is the time fixed for a public hearing of this ordinance, which was introduced at the meeting of July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, advertised as required by law, together with a notice of hearing for this time. It's been posted on the County Commissioners Bulletin Board and made available to the general public. Are there any speakers on this ordinance? Seeing none, I'd like a motion to close the hearing.
Motion.
Second. Second.
Sedano. Lipsy and Sedano.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? On the final adoption. Commissioner Ponte Litsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner O'Day.
Yeah, note, and just to note, I'm not opposed to getting these or having these done on an annual basis, but our past practice was each year they would be voted on. And my no vote just reflects that we're now voting for the next three years of increases, where I think that each year they should be voted on after the budget occurs.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
This concludes the items of business on today's agenda. Are there any comments from the Commissioners on the business of the board?
Yes.
Billy, go ahead.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to note a couple of items. First, I was very happy to see the presentation that CFG did the other day. I think the incorporation of the inpatient program located on North 13th Street in North for individuals with serious mental health issues is going to really help address a problem that we've seen at at the Correctional Center in recent years, as well as be a huge component of making the mental health court that the county is going to see happen in the soon as sooner rather than later, but in the near future, be much more successful. And I also want to commend the county for the approach they took in resolving the contract with 3206, hearing the voices of those employees who came here on numerous occasions, and obviously the input they afforded this board to make the the changes and adjustments to many of those salaries to reflect what other counties are also paid.
Thank you, Bill. Continue, Madam Clerk. Go ahead, Al. Go ahead, Al.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to echo in part Bill's comments about item 33, the CFG contract. My my comments on at Tuesday's caucus, the clerk was was able to give me the contact information to call the CFG representative, which I did yesterday morning, and he answered all my questions. Not my, the 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 thrust of my questions on Tuesday were, this is not an insignificant contract. It's it's close to $15 million. What what I was concerned about was how, if at all, our big, beautiful bill that our president has shoved down everybody's throat, how that affected, if at all, this contract or our reimbursement? And he assured me that it it really was irrelevant because Medicaid was not a component of this payment. It never has been. He explained to me the Medicaid reimbursement situation with respect to inmates and outpatient and inpatient services. So I'm satisfied that it's appropriate to to voice my my eye on this resolution. So I want to get that out. And I think Medicaid is not really a significant player in this contract.
Thank you, Al.
Thanks.
I just want to add also, it was just a wonderful collaborative effort between the executive branch ourselves and the representatives were so forthcoming and willing to interact with us and the the leadership of the of the correctional facility. So again, thank you. Continue, Madam Clerk.
Are there any comments from the Chief of Staff to the County Executive?
Patty? Oh, Jenny's here too. Okay.
Right. This is the time for persons who submitted a timely written request to address the board on any matter of public interest. Please remember to limit your comments to three minutes.
Chairman, please note that we're having technical difficulties with the timer. I will be timing the speakers and I will let them know when the three minutes has expired.
You got it, sir.
First speaker is Raymond Mitchell.
When are you going to start?
When you start talking.
Okay. I'm the timer. All right. So last meeting I was here, July 17th of 2025. Esther Suarez, I gave notice to. Also, the captain of Internal Affairs and Captain of Homicide to be here. July 17th, Miss Esther Suarez retires after she caused COVID that my father died of. Which I I would like to challenge it. I also gave a call to Desiree in the Prosecutor's Office, give notice to Wayne. The new prosecutor, is he here? So I could challenge it. Adam, anybody here? Oh, so I could challenge it with you? About the COVID? My father, you have proof?
Mr. Mitchell, there's no back and forth. You're addressing us.
Okay.
You have to address us, please.
Order. How long have I been coming for this? At your office for my father's mystery death and also for Dennis Miller?
He's not to.
How many years?
He's not to answer. It is not a dialogue, sir. With all due respect, we don't dialogue. You have to speak to us, please. Please. Thank you.
All right, so. Fanny.
Don't address her personally, please, by Commissioner.
Commissioner Fanny? Okay. Brian Stack. You know, those letters he gave me, I act sure about the person, Lily Beth, that she just vanished. She doesn't work for, I guess, you guys anymore. Do you have the personnel's information?
She's not.
Well, that's privilege. Do you have privilege with Brian Stack?
She's not going to have a dialogue with you, sir. I told you.
Okay, so no one, okay. So what do we think about Esther Suarez? Will she stay silent? Do you think that's suspicious? That she retires the same day I came here and asked her what happened to my father's mystery death, that she said he had COVID? Which I'm challenging, his face here. He has strangle marks. At the Hackensack Meridian Hospital. Owned the North Bergen Harbor Bridge, March 30th of 2020. So I've been going through this so for over more than five years. Trying to investigate, figure out what happened to my father's face. And Miss Esther Suarez, I believe now she knows, we could all see it. Reasonable suspicious. What do you think? Officers and attorneys, everybody here? Who wears a badge and it's an attorney? Do you think that's reasonable suspicious that she just gets to retire and called my dad's COVID and then retires right same day I came here, July 17th? You you don't think she needs to be locked up? Put in prison? For covering up, shielding all these years, ex-40, he knows. I poured it down. Come on.
Again, Mr. Mr.
He's he's a witness. He knows how many times I went to that office about this. Dennis Miller and also the chief, Dennis Miller, how he used the Mayor Gennelli line of fabricated. Okay, about me. So.
Next speaker.
Next, we have to have next speaker.
Mr. Vincent Johnson.
Hi, all.
Jerry.
We are with the Hudson County Youth Football Program.
Do me a favor, Vinnie, into the mic so we can hear you, please.
We're the Hudson County Youth Football Program. And for the last few years, you guys have been helping us a great deal to keep our league running. So I'm going to cut it short. I'm going to give it to our treasurer and she's going to explain what we need from you guys, if possible.
Is this the official money again, correct?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, man. Your name, please, for the board.
Good afternoon. My name is Petrea Rodriguez. Let me just set this down. Thank you. So as Vinnie mentioned, we get lots of help from you guys and a lot of support for our youth, our kids in the Hoboken Leagues and Hudson County Leagues. So what I'm here is respectfully to request your support for the All County Youth Football League, which is a vital program that provides young athletes across our county with opportunities of growth, teamwork, and community engagement. And we also assist in fostering great preparedness for their athletic and scholar futures. So as we're preparing for the upcoming seasons, we're facing increased costs by associated with the program for the operations of officiating the games, referees, et cetera. Last season, many of the board members had to put up personal funds because we of the costs that were so high, we were a little short. So we had to actually put some of our personal money into paying to continue to have the program continue to run properly. We lost almost about four to 5,000 of personal funds in order to finish the season. In order for us to be able to continue and offer a safe, inclusive, and enriching experience to our youth, we're formally requesting an amount of $23,000 for our 2025 football season, which the total cost to run our program, just in referee costs, is 20,300. About 1,200 for our championship trophies and recognitions for our youth and badges and other miscellaneous expenses that are incurred with the with the kids during the games.
Well, I know this, I think I speak for the whole board. You have very big supporters here for athletics. I know County Executive Craig Guy. And I'm sure if you meet with Dave Drumler, we'll adjust whatever we have to, as long as you, I think it's important to have a meeting. And this way they know what's needed and, you know, you know, you'll all have our support. You have Billy O'Day, I mean, Kenny Lopez, Jerry Walker, everybody here, everybody will support what you need. Just meet with Dave so we know what where the money's being spent. One other favor we have. Vinnie, Ed Florio would like to be either involved in the league in some capacity, because he was a Hoboken legend that played.
Mr. Chairman, to paraphrase Lyndon Johnson before the 1968 Democratic primary, I shall not seek and I will not accept the nomination to serve as a commissioner on that board.
You were a legend back in the day.
In my. Ed told me he was giving free referee services, actually.
Yeah, go ahead, Bobby.
Where do you get your funding now? How are they from your program?
Us. We do every year.
Your funding comes through the county?
Yeah. They're just looking for an adjustment as efficient.
Trying to figure out if, I know that there are other youth, other departments that fund youth programs. And if every year you're coming up short, maybe we look at that as something to supplement or add to your program.
There's your second meeting with Commissioner Basleys, who does all the juvenile justice stuff too, so he would know.
Absolutely. Any help is greatly appreciated. I'm a volunteer. I've been helping Vinnie for the past three years. My son now is no longer in the program, but I'm still volunteering and helping out with the board.
I attend all your functions and it's the city, you know, it's amazing what you do accomplish, Vinnie. And for those to keep those wonderful children off the street and involved in a program where where the game is taught and where the coaches volunteer and to see that it's different cities in the county come together, it's just an amazing thing and you all volunteer. So we'll be there. And if you're looking about referee questions, you know, I have Patty McCarthy there, who was a referee. So see, get him, get any question, see if you get him out there again.
Volunteerism is good, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You get Dave's information and Bobby's information, okay?
The next speaker is Mark.
Hold on, hold on. Billy wants to speak. Go ahead, Billy.
I'm sorry.
DeReese isn't here. Who's here from DeReese's department?
Uh, back there.
So we we used to have I think her name's Priscilla, who we brought on to assist nonprofits in applying for funding. Do we still have some kind of contractual relationship? Can you research that? Because like, in all instances like that, we should also just refer them to her and someone should just do some just general research. Are there grants available for youth football for whatever, equipment, referees? You know, and and then assist those entities in applying for those funds. Some of those funds are one-page applications. They might be $2,500 or whatever, but if we just simply don't do that, then, you know, we 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 are here to cover the whole nut and the whole number. So we brought someone on specifically to be helpful with that. It would be good if we were able, whenever we have a situation like this, that we're able to just sit down with the group and say, do some research. Are there any banks, local foundations, businesses, et cetera, that have as one of their lists? In this case, it's youth football. Some may be youth baseball. Oh, so.
Yeah, I'll be with them after. We do have a consultant.
Guess what I thought?
Vinnie.
Just to do a little research, if it's a couple, few thousand, it's a few thousand, and then they're not waiting at the end of the year to cover the.
Vinnie, that's Charanda, that's Jerry Walker's wife. She's also a director.
Right, that's.
Okay, and Jenny.
There you go. There you go. There you go.
And you have you also have Jenny Davis and Patty from the County Exec's office to give you any guidance, too. Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Mark Bloomberg.
Mark Bloomberg, come on up, Mark.
Just while he's coming up, just as a normal course, when we have nonprofits come here looking for funding, Charanda should just make sure they sit down and see if there's other money though.
Good point.
Yes, sir.
Hello. So on July 22nd, the county received information regarding soil testing that had been done in Braddock Park at the proposed new picnic area. I love the idea of the new picnic area. So I'm just concerned that on the 22nd, the county was notified that lead was found in some of the soil samples, including some on the actual surface level at very high levels above safe standards. I stopped by the site two days ago, three weeks after we, the county received this notice. There was nothing on the site identifying that it, you know, there's hazardous materials on the site. I completely appreciate that the report said they don't know the full extent of it. It could be a larger area. They have to do more testing. But I want to say I'm disappointed at this point that it's been three weeks and there hasn't been any response as far as putting up signage. Yeah. I would assume we would want to keep people out of that area. As, so that's the primary thing. As everything with me runs through the preschool, if you look at the map of where the lead was found and where the preschool is, they're really close to each other. Now, everybody here signed off on putting a pre, a permanent preschool in that park. You took on faith from North Bergen that that was the safest place to put the school. Nobody required them to do any soil testing and in 25 years, none has been on that site. So if they find something, I don't know who ends up paying for that either, but it just seems like it was a major oversight. Yeah, there was another area not too far from from the preschool as well, where Creoso was found years ago because of railroad ties that were dumped. So just because, you know, oh, it's a park, it should be a safe place. There could be danger coming from the ground basically on it. So first and foremost, you know, let's see a better response out of the county to 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 protect our residents and parkgoers. I know it's not a well-utilized area of the park at this point, but but even so, that's my primary point today. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you answer that, Dave or Al Berico?
I'd have to defer to to Parks Department.
Jonathan, then Jonathan will meet with you.
Yep.
Jonathan, please.
And see. I mean, posting some signage is probably something could be done relatively quickly, easily, and not that extensive.
Jonathan.
Yep.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Courtney Walker.
Good afternoon, County Commissioners. My name is Courtney Walker and I'm a resident of Jersey City. I'm here again today to express deep concern about the ongoing target of immigrants, including students, lawful residents, and citizens by ICE and the Trump administration. As I mentioned last month, ICE raids have been escalating nationwide this year. Here in New Jersey, we've seen a 70% increase in ICE arrests in 2025, averaging nearly 20 arrests a day. Today, I'd like to follow up on last month's discussion and better understand the relationship between our Hudson County Sheriff's Office and ICE agents, if there is one. I'm choosing to follow up on the conversation here since this is the form that's proven to be most effective for dialogue and understanding how our county government works. To be specific, areas of North Hudson have seemed to be of particular interest of ICE agents, members of the public, even having noticed ICE agents operating within some county parks. The questions I have regarding the Sheriff's Office are as follows. Do county sheriffs have any kind of working relationship with ICE, formal or informal? Do our sheriffs? Do our sheriffs share buildings with ICE agents during their shifts, such as the county courthouse or other county facilities? How are we working with schools, universities, hospitals, and parks to establish or strengthen policies and rapid response systems when federal agents do show up? Do we currently have any policies in place to protect our community from overreach of ICE agents? Again, I'd like to reiterate how this form is one of the most effective for the public to interact with the county, and it's concerning how access to this meeting is limited to the middle of a workday. Heading into the fall, these start times will push back to 4:30, but again, that is an incredible inconvenience to working members of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. If you can, after the meeting, speak with Under Sheriff Conti. He can answer your questions with regards to law enforcement.
But you know what? Like, can he answer them here on the record? Like, I mean, they certainly have significance to all of us.
I was out in the hallway, so I didn't hear her question.
Courtney, could you just repeat them? And there shouldn't be a time limit put on you, because you're just repeating the questions you have.
So the questions include, does the sheriff's office have any kind of working relationship with ICE, whether this is formal or informal? Okay. Do sheriffs share buildings with ICE agents during their shifts, like the courthouse? Okay. How are we working with schools, universities, hospitals, and county parks to establish or strengthen like rapid response systems if federal agents show up on like those county premises?
We don't assist them.
Right, but do we have policies in place where we can help protect residents in county areas, like schools, parks, et cetera? We don't, no policy, okay. Yeah, so those were the questions.
Okay. So Courtney, my question to you would be, do you have, from other jurisdictions, potential policies that the sheriff's office could consider?
I'm sure there are policies that we could look up, yes.
Could provide that, then we'll share that and see what.
Can you provide that, Courtney? Because this is Al Sefeli. I, I, I look at the national immigration situation as President Trump's policies have seemed, at least, to, as they say, secure the borders on a present basis, as far as new people coming into the country. And I understand that. What more, what's more troubling to me is how the administration's policies affect people that are here now with respect to deportation and taking people off the streets, whether the ICE agents are masked or whatever, where they're showing up. That, to me, is much more troublesome. And it's much more troublesome in that we have a lot of friends, neighbors, who have been here for literally decades and now are being threatened, even though they are hardworking, law-abiding, tax-paying people, and they are getting lumped in together with what President Trump would call the terrible criminal element in the undocumented population. That, to me, is much more troubling. So I think I go to that question as to what we, as a local law enforcement entity or entities, are doing with respect to that half of the problem. I mean, I know if that coincides with what your thoughts are, but that's what my thoughts are.
It does. Go ahead, Carol Jean.
Next speaker is Sabura Alexander.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Sabura Alexander, Hudson County employee, president of AFME Local 1697. I am here to say thank you to you all. Thank you for ratifying our contract on July 17th. I was not here to speak. I thought it was a 4:30 session, so I missed that. I did sign up, thank you, Ms. Doyle. But we are pleased. We are thankful. We appreciate you. It was tough. It was. But I want to give special thanks to head negotiator, Sean Diaz. He was phenomenal. He was tough. I was tough. But, you know, my prayers were heard and they were answered. I want to extend the thanks to our director, Frank Maza, to central personnel director, Eleanor Gibney. Yes, we don't always see eye to eye, but I want to thank her. I'm here to thank her because I believe in giving credit where it's due. And Eleanor did not have to do what she did for my membership. So Eleanor, wherever you are, I see you. Thank you so much, Eleanor Gibney.
Jersey City girl, born and raised.
I'm from Brooklyn, New York, but you know what?
Same thing.
Like I said, same thing, but.
I object. I object to Eleanor more credit than she deserves. Holy kidding, Eleanor.
Don't say that. Don't say that. No, she, she, she went above and beyond her team. Stop laughing. Be nice.
Eleanor's great. She's great.
She is. Eleanor, her team, Mary Beth, from personnel, my office, I want to thank Sharon Santana. I want to thank Christian Santiago. I want to thank Erin Alley. I want to thank any and everybody that had anything to do with our contract, our increase, our retro. You know, the biggest thing for my membership was, and Eleanor, we thank you for pushing it up, because we needed to get the funds so that we can get school shopping. So as opposed to September 5th, her wonderful team has agreed to August 22nd. So I am here to say thank you. I am here for that. I appreciate you all. I will be stepping down when my term is up, so you won't be seeing me.
You're still welcome here.
I'll come, I'll come and visit. But it's definitely been a pleasure. It really has. We're greatly appreciative. We thank you. I mean, we're happy.
Good.
We're happy. And one last thing, Commissioner Lopez, I'm going to send you an email to see if we could possibly get some help with the parking in Bayonne. That's, that's it. Thank you all so much. I greatly appreciate it.
Well deserved, you and all your workers. It was a collaborative effort, executive branch, legislative, and all the directors. We, as a board, thank you all for your service, and we also thank everybody for working together to at least come to some kind of fair compromise. So God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And we really appreciate your shout out to Eleanor, because Eleanor's great.
Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Commissioner, I just wanted to say I need a vote from Commissioner Ponte Lipsky and,
On the minutes.
Commissioner, on the minutes, for the caucus for July 15th and the regular for July 17th, also for the caucus on June 24th and the regular meeting of June 26th. I need a vote from. Commissioner Walker?
He's, he's off the air.
Oh, he's off the air. Okay, that concludes the business for today.
Yes. All in favor? Aye. Thank you all. Have a good break. See you.